Hi guys, so this is actually going to be a very unique one. Today is a town hall meeting with the Gobal Tarian candidate of the Labour Party at an archon in Imo State. And it's actually because of the reality of the election and how it's going to be come November 11, 2023. We all know that the Imo State election is going to be taking place in the beautiful state. And a lot of things are really going to be happening. Now, from the town hall meeting is what I'll be bringing to you guys here. So let me not say much, allow you watch the video. It's over an hour, seventeen minutes video, so just enjoy. Please take your time, listen to everything and drop your comments.
I've already started my village. I've built an agriculture that can employ up to two thousand persons. So I'm going to indicate that, so I will even extend that to have a farm to plant ten thousand palm trees in every local government. We wanted to do it in communities, but we'll start with local governments. So we have fifty thousand, the local government, in the next five years. Once we start it, any government after the first four years can continue it. And they will put in processing zones that will process. You know, we used to export palm oil in the past, now we import. Now, in a way, there is an existing industrial cluster here without the infrastructure. We will put, we want to put light in the first year of it, but without light, you can't have industrialization. So we'll put light and we'll put infrastructure for them. Then, around the Gobal area, first of all, I will activate our international cargo hall. This airport, since Mbakwe, has not been activated by anybody. So we'll activate it, cargo will remain in there. So we'll now do another agri hall along the riverbank. We have surveyed it, we are going to hit the ground running once we take over in general. We will even better instruments for the funding and the financing. Now, in the health sector, I have already built twenty-six health centers. I'm twenty-seven, I've furnished twenty-six completely. All the governments, they don't want to activate them because of politics. So now that I'm going to be a governor, I'm going to activate them. So health will be one of my other priorities. So like I said, I won't take much of your time. We used to be number three in education. Now we are twenty-four, our teachers have all departed. So I'm going to retrain the existing teachers so that we have quality education. With all this over here, and I don't need to borrow money. The workers, they're going to pay them, but if we take time, we'll be, we'll look at the debt portfolio and see how we can train it over some time. I think I've said enough, thank you very much. I said no farming, please. Hello. Simple instruction, we would not hear. No farming, please. Alright? Thank you very much. Yes. I'm sure those of you that manage, can have your questions ready. Because I'll come and start from your side. If you don't ask questions, they'll answer one thousand. Please, okay. It's still, it's still a town hall meeting put together by JDP C. And the characters who were at JDP C, the National Motor, Pride for Action, and the Imo Advocacy Group. And it's a platform which we created so that citizens can interface with the Gobal candidates ahead of the November 11, 2023 elections. And you agree to me that, yes, I'm seeing some ideas, but there are still going to be more, okay? And it's structured on the candidates. Yes, we call on the candidates of the Action Alliance, the person of Major General Ogunewu Lincoln. Welcome, start your tone.
I agree to organize this program. And I thank and greet my fellow candidates. Thank you for introducing UN Security Council Bureau, no farming, no matter how sweet the speaker has spoken. And Major General Lincoln, Konyemre Jack Ogunewu. The candidate of Action Alliance. And I'm here to present my manifesto. Before that, I want to stand here and say that my heart goes to Imolites and residents in Imo that have been violently, violently killed. My heart goes to them, media, social media. My manifesto is anchored on four thematic areas. First, security, justice, and protection of human rights. Two, tackling unemployment and improving Imolites' productive capacity. Three, infrastructure, wealth, and quality of life. And last, Imo good governance. I start off on security. Security is an important commodity. You will notice it's important when it's absent, like we are seeing today. We are in a deep emergency. Insecurity has taken over Imo State. And without it, we will not have any room to move ahead. I have mapped out how insecurity be handled in Imo State. I'm coming from a security background. I understand that you must understand the interface of the national security architecture, national security policy, national defense policy. So that when you are interacting with some of these agencies, you are operating from a position of strength, position of knowledge. Secondly, have me make sure that we achieve peace in Imo. First and foremost, I will invoke what I call Security Summit. That Security Summit, everybody will be involved. The traditional rulers, the pledges, those in government, those in academia. Even some of our sons and daughters, we bring them, they should come, let's visit together. Because to solve insecurity, you need to negotiate, you need to pacify, you need to integrate into the society. Another area you think of is how many of our sons and daughters that are in detention centers in Imo State? We must get such statistics, we must provide legal services for them to make sure that for someone to think that he will take the liberty of an Imolite, he will take points. Two, we must establish a community policing network, kind of a data system that will not be armed. They will go to various, if we will communication agencies. Since I understand the national security, there will be an interface for them to operate effectively with their security agencies. And lastly, on that, I will make sure that we establish what I call security intervention fund. When I interacted with our diaspora brothers and sisters, I told them that the millions you are spending hiring security agents for protection, pay you five dollar, ten dollar a month into this intervention fund we have. What is going to help us in making sure that we maintain some of the agencies that we are going to create. Secondly, I said tackle unemployment and improve the quality of life of Imolites. It's very simple. You look at the ease of doing business in Imo State, how difficult it is for investors to come. And all the things we take, creating the right policies, creating the right laws, enabling laws to make sure that people will come here freely to do business. Imolites have native energy. They have native energy that when they come into the food and the environment, the sky will be the limit in Imo State. Also, I talked about infrastructure, wealth, and quality of life. This is covered in agriculture, health, and education. We are going to make sure that we provide quality and effective services in this area. And we talked about Imo good governance. Imo good governance will involve transparency in government. It will involve that every stakeholder will be involved before a decision or a policy is invoked. That is going to force stakeholders buying into a government policy. And with transparency in government, you will grow a lot, you will achieve a lot. People will believe you. My government will not only be transparent, it will be seen to be transparent. I will end up by an example, Imo Airport was built because of transparency in government. We lived in the transparency of government of Samuel Mungambe. We saw it, when you made a lion court that we needed at airports. Every person came into that and knew fully well that this government showed us transparency, showed us accountability, showed us honesty. So my manifesto is not to focus, easy to understand, easy to follow. And by the time you go through it, you discover that it is very, very simple to end insecurity in Imo State. It will be very, very simple for businesses to return to Imo State. It will be very, very simple to network, if you wish. Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. We can now give a wonderful round of applause to all the candidates. Well, some people have asked how far, we only have six of them on the stage, instead of seventeen of them that are going for the number one position in the state. And for people that are just coming in, I said earlier on, that while we're planning this town hall meeting, a pool was ongoing to select the top government candidates in the forthcoming elections. You understand, and this went around the state. And from the collation of results, this six, well, there are five here, because the governor of the state is not here. A man, top rated or top candidates for the election, and that's how we brought it. It has no way negated the fact that other candidates are in the race. It has no way negated the fact that there are seventeen candidates in the race. And it is just based on what we can handle. If we had the will now to handle the seventeen of them, they would have been here, alright? So that's that. At this juncture, it's time for the interactive session. Questions will be asked. You've heard insecurity is a major challenge. I mean, insecurity is a major challenge, local government autonomy, unemployment, industrialization, infrastructure. It goes on and on and on. You understand, even revenue generation, ease of doing business, hence everybody touching on one thing or the other. So the question, just that, for the Victoria, and my uncle and I will try to invest ourselves on the questions to the candidates. And right after that, we probably vote for one or two from members of the audience. And then we do a rap, you know, and we call it a rap. Okay, so that's that. Are you ready? You have the prospect that I will improve. Okay, let me, let me, let me, let me start. Okay, I'll start from the first candidate.
And so far, you have been very, very wonderful. This is talks like here, ladies and gentlemen, who respect themselves upon doing themselves. Thank you very much. We are about fishing out just some little things to give to the stomach, water and snacks. Kindly do it like a gentleman, so that we have continued the way we have been doing. You have been wonderful, and I hope you will respect this. Thanks, thank you very much.
Alright, to retrieve that fact, is that while the questions and answers are going on, waters and stabs, please, let's do it with decorum, no noise making. Sit down, the marchers will do it till it's there, I'll show you. So, well, I need one usher here, I need one usher here on stage, quickly, quickly. I need, and yes, for the questions, whilst we throw the question, the candidate has two minutes to give us the answer, and we'll move to the next one. And it goes on and on and on like that, until we call it a rap. Okay, so please, yes, you go on stage, you go on stage. Once the question is asked, you give the candidates the microphone, you can sit down, if you want to relax, you know? But if you feel you cannot project whilst sitting down, you're feeling to still use the rostrum. Alright, you can sit down to answer your question. Where? Please. Okay. I need a usher out on stage with the microphone going round, please.
And why the marchers come, to not forget that we are streaming live across the entire group from various broadcast outlets, both conventional and online, on Facebook at Imo, Imo, Imo. Imo have, we can see on Facebook.
Alright, is the usher there? Please give him a microphone, so that you give to the candidates once, once the question is addressed to Imo. Who starts with the first candidate that mounted the rostrum, the person of Sir Tony Juru. First, you tell us, what is your motivation to run for this position? Then you mention the fact that your administration will anchor on digital economy. Can you draw more insight on that, quickly? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me start with the digital economy. Digital economy, it says that we need to have the infrastructure backbone to run our economy. One, it's going to improve our business operations in every facet. Two, it's going to create a lot of opportunities for our youth to get engaged entrepreneurially. The digital economy, what I intend to do is to set up tech hubs in three solitary zones where our youths are going to be properly empowered with the right skillset. I talked about project management, I talked about customer service, I talked about data analysis, business analysis, and all that. Once they are properly trained, like the counterparts in India, they will remain here in Imo State providing services across the globe. That's what we intend to do with digital economy. Not like what the administration is promising to ship four thousand youths across overseas, no. What we intend to do is to make sure that our youths remain here, they are well equipped, and they are able to sell their services across the, across the globe. We're opening up the global technology and digital marketplace for them. That's what I mean by that. And also, we're having the right infrastructure, what I call the fiber optic technology. What that does also is to give us the backbone, so that businesses that come in, businesses want two things. They want power, they want access to technology, okay? Once you have that, you can do business. The infrastructure provides also opportunities for our people to get engaged entrepreneurially. Just like you have the low and ETA, look at what happens. They are retailing data, they have edges. So power low, or telecom low, you can retail and you can become edges. As far as, as far as power is concerned, we want to focus on renewable energy.
Alright, thank you very much, thank you very much, okay? Um, whatever you have, you have a second question.
Okay, I have the next question for Chief Okere, John Hughes. Okay, he's wanting to talk about investment and the opportunities, job opportunities, and another thing to have strategic plans for it. So my question goes this way. How do you plan to attract investments and create job opportunities to enhance the economic well-being of Imo residents?
Yeah, thank you. Job, job creation is not rocket science. Now, then, first, we are going to go to the State Assembly and get the authorization to set up six new institutions in the state. And these six new institutions will be an instrument to use education to boost our economy. When you get these high institutions, you're creating jobs, you're bringing new people into our space. And when you bring new people into our space, as young as we are, they'll bet in the state, they'll eat in the state, they'll clothe in the state. That way, you're opening room for new enterprises, for small businesses to start. Now, we're also going to, to transparent leadership, encourage our productive diaspora to come into our space and invest. And when they invest, you create more jobs through local businesses that have been set up. And remember, when you create these facilities, the space also opens for real estate. Because you now have more people living in your space, now have more people who in need of, we are to slave and we are to the rest their help. So real estate will also boost for that simple instrumental decision to open your space to businesses. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, okay? I'm pleased to stay here to ask my question. Please take my phone to the PDP candidate, the person of Senator, distinguished Senator Sam, Daddy, I am. Alright? Okay, now, sir, you talked about, this is, this is, you talked about the laws that are relevant to security in the state. These are some of the economic challenges you raised out in your manifesto. And now the question is this, what is going to be your strategy to improve the state's economic stability and growth in future demand? Well, first of all, first, we'll talk about the economy. And for us to create economic stability here, we have to first of all, ensure that there is security in this space. Once there is security, business will spring up. We have, we have investors who are ready to come to Imo State to invest. Once the place is secure, they'll come. I will create a task concession, give them a task waiver to invest. Once we create a task waiver, they'll come, because to start a business here takes some time. Improve on power. If you remember, Mbakwe built a railway station at Amala, which was taken away. If we bring on the power here, the economy of this place, every facet of the economy will definitely grow. And it will create stability by ensuring that the people who have their business here will believe in the government, that there will be a transparent government which will help in creating stability. Because when you have a transparent government and include the people in there, they will definitely develop this space. And there will be economic stability in this space.
Thank you very much. The next question is also that to our turn, Bokemipoy in London, Akshon. And you talked about security. Please help me give us that to our turn. You talked about security, and my question goes this way. How do you expect to collaborate with security agencies and engage with local communities and enhance overall security within the state?
It's a very straightforward question. Of course, that's why I'm limiting the vigilante to local government. Because I've tried it out, I tried, with my community, tried to set up one, found out that they couldn't carry the financial burden. So you set it up at the local government, where they were paying their salary, they were supposed now collaborating as part of the law, and not to send to the others, but first of all, they will collaborate with police, police will train them, of course. Police, simply the first DSS will work with, together with them. So that is very straightforward. But let me add something, and that's why I'm running for government. I'm running for governor because the whole place is a mess. I want to create an enabling environment for Imos to come home and invest, which is why I've been championing a guru in the last twenty years. So that's why I'm running for governor. Because, as you see, I was expecting that we should present our CV, what we have done wherever we had worked before, this shows our capacities and capabilities. But anyway, we were not asked to serve, that's why I'm running for governor. To create an enabling environment for Imos who have been chased all over Nigeria to come home and invest. And they're going to follow me once I take over. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. And now, it's turn of the general, General Lincoln, Ogunewu. Yeah, first and foremost, the question is this, can you describe the professional experience and how it is relevant in governing a state like Imo? One, and secondly, give us a better insight into tackling the security challenges. Thank you very much. My professional experience is out there in the public domain. Our South Great Temple, nationally, within the sovereign zone, continentally, and internationally, up to the United National Security Council. I sat in chamber for more than two and a half years. So that has given me a lot of insights, that has given me a lot of understanding that the best way to run government is applying best practices in government. That gives a level playing ground for everybody to operate. Once laws are cast, it's true, every person will comply with it. But if laws are cast, if people are compliant, no consequences. That is the hidden problem in a society. And if you ask me how will I tackle insecurity in the society or in Imo State? I'm coming from the security sector, where I served for more than thirty-five years as an officer, including three years cadre training, that's that's eight years. I have contact, I have bridge, I have understanding of what the national security architecture is all about. The national security policy, the national defense policy. I know how to reach out and explore this to make sure that you will not have kind of overreach by secret agencies who are operating in Imo State. Secondly, I want to tell you that anywhere you have conflict, you cannot resolve it by arrogance, you can't resolve it by threat, you can't resolve it by cost, you can't resolve it by bullets. Confidence everywhere, or inserted on the negotiating table, almost whatever, negotiating table. Why can't we negotiate it as sound and good? Thank you.
Thank you very much, my gorgeous sir, Anthony. Now, let's talk about issues affecting the state. Imo State faces challenges in health.
Please, please, we are eating, we can eat in a pit and listen attentively. Please make it peaceful, please. This is the meat of today's event, the ideas and how they intend to help us take our stage to another, to create a hack. So please, let's listen attentively, so that we have more choices during the battles. Thank you very much. Alright, my move again.
Okay, back to my question. So Imo State faces challenges in healthcare, education, and infrastructure. So my question goes like this, how would you ensure that essential services like, like healthcare and education are accessible and of high quality for all residents in Imo State? Sir Anthony, I've got a question.
Thank you. Very simple. I talked about making sure that we will return democratic accountability at the local level. That means making sure that the top tier level of government is activated again. What that does is brings development down to the grassroots. So everything. When the local government is financially and operationally independent, then it works. The primary healthcare centers will run, they will be close to the people and they will be accessible. Then, with weak enough employee technology, that is, in every primary healthcare center, there is drugs available, there is a nurse available, with internet, and doctors can also do telemedicine and be able to see the patient while not even in the office. That is what happens. So, the top tier level of government must be functional, because that brings the whole thing down to the grassroots, to the people at the bottom. Thank you.
Alright, okay, on the heels of that, let's look at the next question for... Okay, Emo is said to be an agricultural society. As a very, this question is for you. And yes, you mentioned the fact that you're looking into sports, entertainment and so forth. Of course, you know that food is necessary. So, we want to know, how do you intend to, you know, galvanize your agriculture policy to be able to boost agriculture in this state? Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. You very much agree with me that food allows us to go through athletic chores or other activities and also recalibrate our brain. Now, Emo State is over sixty percent an agriculture-based economy, because in our local communities, we have different local communities who are big in agriculture, above everywhere they are. We have government who farm large, Kasaba will have government who farm large in Yambu. So, we are going to identify every local government by their strengths and now begin to engage more training, more orientation to make them boost the capacity of food production. And through the capacity of food production, you also know that when you have large bank of food, now you now need to process it to get it dried for preservation and for markets. So, we're going to open our agricultural hub to exportation. That is where the money is. We're also going to open these hubs to process it, because when you process them, you have them for tomorrow and you can also move them around Nigeria, around nation to make more money. So, we are going to take agriculture as an entrepreneurial business to boost and re-innovate the economy of our state. Thank you. Alright, thank you very much. And now to the PDP candidate. Sir, yes, you all agree with me that IGR is a method for development. The question is this: How do you intend to increase internally generated revenue on one hand? And how do you intend to create tax safety nets, including income tax, property tax and sales tax, so that business will move in the states? Thank you very much. Alright, thank you very much. And now to the PDP candidate. Sir, yes, you all agree with me that IGR is a method for development. The question is this: How do you intend to increase internally generated revenue on one hand? And how do you intend to create tax safety nets, including income tax, property tax and sales tax, so that business will move in the states? Thank you very much.
Well, first of all, you have to create the interphone. You have to create entrepreneurship of the state. Because for the revenue of the state to grow, all the skill acquisition programs, petty traders must be encouraged and must be corrected and get a very clear environment for them to develop. They'll be able to pay tax. They'll be able to pay a people, correct, keep the government and then stop the opposition. People will be able to pay their taxes and that will place the revenue of the state. I can tell you that in Emo State, in the last two years, the trajectory of revenue of the state before this position administration was above 1.6 billion a month. But because there was no decoralement, the businesses are closed down, the trajectory of revenue of the state has dwindled to above 600 million. So, we will come on board, we encourage our local entrepreneurs, we encourage business premises, we make sure, we create an enabling environment, make sure that we create a middle class, because one of the problems we have is that we have the rich and poor, that's part of the class. And the one who built the middle class, that middle class will also have to increase the revenue of the state and will encourage investors to come and give them tax concession. When they give them tax concession, they will be able to be able to ensure that they develop the place and then the revenue of the state will grow. Now, it is important to say this: The creative industry is one thing that can create revenue of the state.
Thank you very much. And the next question is for the neighbor party, Senator Ata. Now, my question goes like this: Still on values empowerment. Can you outline and outline your specific plans to engage and empower the youth in different zones of Emo State, addressing their weaknesses and challenges?
The jobs we are going to create is for the youth. We are not going to say, okay, this is empowerment for the youth. We are going to stabilize the economy so that youths can have a sense of job. But once we have light and the infrastructure, tech hubs will naturally spring up everywhere. We are creating tech hubs who have little manifestation. But I didn't want to talk about it, because already once you have power everywhere, which is what I'm going to do in my face here in office. Once you have that, these young boys, when they just buy a laptop and you have internet, they create jobs, they apply for jobs, Canada, America, everywhere, outsourcing, cinema manifestation. And so, and then I'm giving women forty-five percent, you know, so that there will now be a lot of empowerment for women. But now, since I have a little time after the answer, I want to appeal to Igboites, to appeal to my brothers here. Let us all go together, Igbo is dying, so that we can salvage it and face the election together. They are my friends, I believe that we can work together, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. And yes, after this question, we will now come to the audience. Some of you have been sending questions to me. I don't know if I'm supposed to reveal that or not, but I'm going to give you the microphone. On this question, yes, looking at what is the legacy, infrastructure legacy you want to leave if you emerge governor on one hand, and how you think of organizing the people to support your candidates? Thank you very much.
I believe that the legacy I will leave is based, or will be based, on my past. You have to look at my character, look at my credibility, look at my history and know that I'm a man of my words. If you are talking about legacy, the legacy I want to leave in government is bringing best practices in government. Just like I said, there are laws that are international laws. For instance, you're talking about how women are involved in government. There's an affirmative action by UN that Nigeria is invited to, that thirty-three percent of jobs will be reserved for women. And I understand that. Also, there are affirmative actions for youths. So, talking generally about the legacy I will leave, I leave a legacy that Emo State on a trajectory that will be a kind of union block. There will be security in Emo State. There will be inclusive environment for investors to come in. High tax regime will be looked at, because high taxes kill investment. It drives away investors. So, these are areas where you look at it, they see that Emo will be developed to a very productive state, like this data path, Emo State, that has left us behind in terms of development and ease of doing business.
Thank you very much. Gradually, we are about to end this program for the warmth of time, both for the candidates and for all of us who are going also for Somarabi Madanbey today. We are giving concession. One person is eyes, one person is here, one person there again. That is one, two, three, four, our clothes, and five. Five of the clothes. So, exercise questions now, we are about to round off. Come let you as you apply. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Father Doctor, Jaral Joko. Quick! No, 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 don't worry, that is this. Please, I want to follow the candidates. While you are wrapping up any question that you want to ask you now from the audience, have this question in mind: If any of you failed to win the election, will Emo still be safe? Are we saying Emo still guaranteed? So, put that at back of your mind. It's a question from before, and I think it's very critical. So, we are starting here. Okay, sir, quickly.
Generally concerned, you mentioned that we use the local government to curb security. What package do you have for the local government administration as regards to development and security? Thank you.
Thank you, General Lincoln. You brought, okay, answer that quickly. Answer that quickly.
Thank you for the question. Local governments are closer to the people. So, if you ask what is the package, I will use a category of security for the local government. Understand that local government is the first tier of security actor in Nigeria. So, everything you are doing, you must involve one, the president general of the time, you know, the youth leaders, the agents, informing a kind of vigilante system that will not be armed, but they will be equipped to provide intelligence to security agencies that will act in any way that is within the law. Because if you form vigilantes and have them, they will, just like experienced, they will end up not using the army where they're supposed to be. I'm talking from a background that I know very well.
Alright, thank you very much. Who is your question for? You know what all of them, it's who's your question for? Ah, it's not possible, that candidate is a new guy. Okay, here, the question for... Okay, sorry, who's your question for, sir? He's already there. Yes, sorry, who's your question for?
You have to do the design check for me. This question goes to the candidate of PDP, Senator Sam Dadi Ayam. District Senator, sir, we have heard some candidates tell Igbo people that they will secure employment for them in Europe and Canada. How do you intend to take care of youth resting places when you become governor?
Alright, Senator Sam Dadi Ayam, please. Thank you very much. First of all, I am not going to encourage or deport, export Emo youths to Europe to get a job. There are only like 4,000 jobs in Europe. First, I want you to understand that in 2007, 11, they formally opened this state. A HAKEM, a HAKEM, created 10,000 jobs. Those 10,000 jobs were youths who had documented a personal report before they stopped there. Once I'm elected as one in by 2015, I'm going to respect those jobs, that would create 10,000 jobs first. Secondly, I am going to conduct a democratically related local government system. I have a product of local government. If you conduct local government election, direct employment is 1,501. So, if you multiply it by average of four, five minutes, that would be about 6,000 people, 7,000 more. You have to take a job appointment. Now, in Ojogbo Gubuta, where you have the oil, there is Alapam. Alapam Biya is Morocco, is a government of Emo State. We are going to rebuild the system of Alapam. Alapam will bring jobs for youths.
Alright, thank you very much. Who's your question for?
Yes, this question is for Senator John, the neighbor party gubernatorial candidate. Sir, how do you intend to replicate your wonderful Agburo law policy? How do you intend to bring the Emo diaspora from the big cities in Nigeria and even overseas to come and help you with your Agburo law investment program?
Alright, thank you very much.
That's a very straightforward question. This is what I've been doing in my studio. I have one in Muromo, where I come from. Then, for the diaspora, I set up a bank also called Murobank that is going to interact with diaspora. Then, as a governor, this thing is just to, I have the contact for the financiers. I have had the experience, that was why I talked about CV. The major financiers in South Africa that bring money and have personal relationship with me. So, as a governor, I'll bring them here and they will fund all these transactions. Thank you very much.
Alright, sir? Okay, thank you.
...of ease of doing business? Would you kindly specify then, tell us a specific item on ease of doing business that you have come to cure? Because Emo is down in Alaba on ease of doing business. And if you are want to show them, I'll give you a specific one. And the second one is on issue of security. You are a general and you are a practicing politician. And you are moving that you've had a general election. What specifically then do you do during the general election to cure the security lapses? To avoid issues of carrying ballboxes? To avoid issues of uploading figures or to do this? And then, do you...
Side of the unit.
Please, please.
Side of the table top.
Please, 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 please.
Chief Joyce, thank you very much for that direct sound of me. I appreciate it. We were in the UN then together and it's there that we build relationships. So, I thank you for your question. If you are asking what, I start from the first bit. As a general, to make sure that, you know...
that, you know, electoral practices, you know, did not happen in EMO, I think that is a, a real question to start. I am not INEC, I am not the leadership agencies involved in the election. The only thing I could do was in adversary capacity, do this still right, do this still right and do that, that is it. I'm not general for conduct of elections. Thank you.
But what I want to promise in EMO this time around, every person, all has got their neck, I'll play my own part, no person will get you, your vote will count and your vote will be protected.
Don't laugh, please, don't laugh.
So you talked about ease of doing businesses. If you check, I don't think we have any enacted laws that are specific that this is what and what we are doing and those we have, they are very, very obsolete. For instance, if you talk about the tax regime in EMO States, if I ask you specifically, you won't hear me. It's something that someone woke up in the morning, he posted tax, no benchmark for this. And there's one thing I learned about Africa going aboring. There's a testament to go and I told them just a second that what Africa mean is not boring, but is high tax regime. High tax regime kills investment and our...
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, the last question, yeah?
Yeah, it is good to be here today. I'm actually a poor bit, but I'm excited to be here today. We do it anyway. In demand of public attention, I wish not. Shall we function in EMO State? In demand of public attention, you know, how focused shall we be in EMO State? What about it? Then also, shall we be able to talk, thank you?
Who is the question? Who is the question?
I say, in demand of public attention, how focused shall we be, have we, say in EMO State?
All right, thank you very much. I think, uh, it has come to the end of the questions right now. Uh, please, we have to acknowledge some people that have actually helped in ensuring that, uh, this whole...
We are streaming live across the entire globe from various podcasts outlets, both conventional and online. We have over a hundred persons who are joining us via Zoom and Facebook and on YouTube. So we want to appreciate it. Thank you very much for joining us today.
All right, uh, I think at this juncture, we recall that at the beginning of the program, um, the five candidates that were present, because the ABC candidate, who happens to be the governor of the state, um, is absent at the Istanbul. But, um, as I think it's, they signed a peace accord and that peace accord is to tell us that they are ready to ensure that come eleven, eleven, twenty, twenty-three, that everything goes smoothly and that each and every of them will have their election peacefully from wherever they are in confidentiality harmony. So right about now, certificate is going to be presented and at this juncture, I will call out on... INEC representative is here. INEC representative is here. Okay? Yes, uh, you can see him standing there, but because he came in when the debate was going on, you know, we couldn't, uh... All right, at this juncture, uh, we will hand over the microphone to the Director of KBC, Reverend Father Doctor Gerald Jacob, to present the certificate to the candidates that raised to the Istanbul meeting. Thank you very much.
At the beginning of the... Vala be ruled black.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. At the beginning of this occasion, I remember definitely the particular paragraph where our mission cautioned or urged the INEC to play their role very importantly. And you came late to this occasion. We informed you earlier that you should also have them here because this is part of what you are doing very here. Please, we want you again to be prompt and in everything you do, beginning now and then until the end of this election. Thank you very much. I want to, in one word, thank everybody that came to this court. You have gone above and beyond what you to bless you. We are about to round off now, eh, in about five days' time, we will leave this hall. God bless you. Calling out, sir, Anthony, a joy to come collect his, uh, certificate of participation, uh, at the Istanbul meeting for EMO State Governor, today, twenty-second of October, twenty twenty-three. A round of applause, please. All right, next is, uh, Chief Commissioner Ujenda. Next is the EMO Governor candidate, Senator Omayew, Nelson Madam. Next is the Labour Party Governor candidate, Senator Atan Atan. Uh, next question is the National Assembly Governor candidate, Senator Lincoln. All right. Our representative... All right, sir, Representative of INEC, Uriya, Uriya, vote of tanks.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Sorry that, uh, in the past, we enjoyed you late. The resident director of the National Committee, Professor St. Delago, was supposed to be here at this time, but only because two hours ago, he called more of that, to talk about the agenda. So, uh, they asked me to come and represent that. So I bring you good wishes from that. Uh, please, I want to thank, uh, J.D. Lucy, J.D. Lucy, the members, I don't think I know, I have not had this, uh, opportunity. I think that really is a great opportunity to meet, meet those superstars that you, you may have just played, uh, and, uh, we are prepared for the election. You know, after twenty days to the election, and this is the first off cycle election of the government in EMO State, you all have been, have been prepared. So, uh, I would not be leaving an address because it's very late, but I would just want to use this short opportunity to assure you that INEC is fully prepared for the election. Uh, this year, we have active candidates, uh, criteria book, you are level to accomplish, uh, eleven remaining two. The only thing, good things you are yet to do is observing you as you tend your campaign on May, November, uh, twenty twenty-three and then on the last, the calendar of the those are the good things, women, we probably, we have done. We have deployed advanced security measures in the local government. We have, uh, against the stakeholders, different structure of stakeholders, some of whom have attended our event, we have secured the services of security agencies that they are going to provide and offer security. So we're urging you, uh, please to find out your contacts to the size of franchise, not be deceived by people who tell you that the resources have been written. I want to tell you that nobody has attended the security materials, not given an action about the red, about myself, nobody will see it. Go come out of your past, receivers will be used to do a correctional, to blow looks up. Uh, please, you know, only three states are involved and I need to say this, because the people have a certain fear about, about one by them, only three states, which means all the security assets will be concentrated in three states. We are going to have a custody security, come our global to debate, to let you, INEC will provide eleven, three grand for everybody. And so we can reassure that we are going to have free, fair and equal election, but never, November, twenty twenty-three. Once again, I thank you very much for this period of good gathering and God bless you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, esteemed conference and audience. We really appreciate you for staying to this very moment. Next is both of tanks by Dabari Chikyotu. Thank you.
How will I shut down?
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh... Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Nikkeleva Dabari Chikyotu and, uh, we are very glad to have come this far in this effort. I hope to appreciate candidates who have shown up for this program. This program is on the line, no listening on radio, no joining us on social media and no speaking today. It is very significant and by showing up today, you have shown that indeed you understand the content of the agent, the public in the discourse of the democracy and election. So on behalf of this coalition of the J.D. Lucy, the over, uh, candidate, uh, special administration and the EMO handbook is through our... Thank you, thank you to, um, our esteemed, uh, audience. Thank you to everybody who has gained one, therefore, another, to make this, make a success. The level of commitment is the destiny for the soul and future of EMO State and everyone of us here has that responsibility to make it happen. I wish us the best of luck and it goes for the candidates and of course, every citizen of EMO State. Thank you, everybody.
All right, final prayer from the Director himself, final prayer at the national anthem and we all discuss. Thank you very much.
May we stand... We give your thanks, oh Almighty God, for this great opportunity you have given us today, to express our sentiments, to express our joys and our hope for the success of the coming, upcoming election, November eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Bless everybody that have come here today and bless their ways as we are retiring home to our various destinations. Send your angels to guide, protect us, lead us safe to our various destinations. And for our brothers who were unable to come on account of sickness, on account of one reason or the other, you only know, give everybody his or her due rights. And in the end, may the blessings we can receive today in this part of yours, lead us through to our lives and our risk and faith and may all glory continue to belong to you, true Christ, our Lord. The Lord is with you and may the blessings of Almighty God, the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit sit upon you and remain with you now and forevermore. National anthem. Go in the peace of the Lord. This occasion is ended. Peace be with you.